States of America and two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, individual whatever it is just as for all.
If I can have everyone please bow their head for opening prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we appreciate the sun that you give us, the warmth that you're giving us. Now it feels like spring is here, maybe summer is soon to approach. We pray that you watch over all the activities that go on in this city. We've got a lot of them going on, some not as fun as others, and we just pray that you watch over all those activities and those people that are dealing with them that all can come out smooth in the end. We pray that you watch over the activities that we are partaking this evening, that our actions can be pleasing to you and pleasing to our citizens. In your name we pray. Amen. Thank you. Okay. We'll have the reading and approval of the minutes from April 17th and April 19th.
Motion to approve and suspend the report.
Here we go, a motion. And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Close same sign. Okay, we'll take a look at the agenda. Any additions to the agenda? Okay, be looking for a motion to approve the agenda then. So, we've got a motion, and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. We've got an agenda. Right, we'll kick it off then, under the engineer's report. Grant, come on up.
All right, so we've got quite a bit going on now. Warms up and it seems like everybody's just ready to go immediately. So today, Tan completed that water, or that hydrant relocation. So for those of you guys that aren't up to speed, hopefully everybody is, but they went to go fix that leak last week, and when they dug down, they were all ready to do it, it was cast iron. So, maps didn't show it or anything, it was unexpected. So from the, basically the radius of Main Street, south to the hydrant, it's cast iron. So we, discussions were had, and at that point, the decision was made to relocate that main to the corner of First and Main Street. So the hydrant is now on the corner of First and Main Street. Discussions were had with the fire department as well, to make sure they had the hose and they were comfortable serving that area. It was felt that it was needed to keep that hydrant on the south side of Main Street, with the lumberyard over there and the train tracks as well, just to serve that side. So if there is a fire, you don't have to shut down Main Street. So, it ended up costing a little bit more money, but talking with Tan today, everything went smooth, so it shouldn't be any huge surprise to anybody. So we'll get that finalized from them, hopefully tomorrow, and we'll have that invoice for you guys.
Is all of the line PVC now?
Now the whole line is PVC, from that T south to the hydrant.
Okay.
And they were able to save all the asphalt, so it's just concrete work that needs to be done.
So how did we know that there was PVC to the south side of the hydrant?
We were able to trace, so you can hook up and then trace it, and we were able to trace it to that point of the PVC where it stops.
Because we knew that the fiber hydrant, it was cast iron.
Okay.
Well, you should have.
Yeah.
We replaced it there.
That one time, yeah.
Just last fall.
Yeah. And with discussions in Public Works, everyone realized that it stopped right there at that radius.
Catching. Do we know how much more the hill was going to be there or not?
Um, they're estimating it to be around the $13,000 range, and it originally had been $8,000.
And of course, part of that is the first excavation to get to that leak. And then we ended up putting the dirt back in there, getting that all cleaned up. And then, I'm assuming we just, we abandoned the cast in place?
Yeah, we abandoned the place. And it's something where we could have looked at replacing that whole line of cast iron, with the fire department being comfortable, and then also they ran into when they were excavating that water main, the curve started falling again. So it was about 140 feet, we probably would have lost 140 feet of curve while replacing 140 feet of PVC pipe. So it would have been very expensive to do that. Any questions on that part? We've been talking with Public Works, trying to identify any areas of cast iron. So cast iron, as it gets old, it rusts out and becomes extremely weak. So typically, with increased pressures or anything like that, that's where you're going to see your leaks is on the cast iron. Okay, next. So they completed that today, and then I did do a walkthrough with Angelo and Cipriano, and then the Public Works Department today. So we walked through the project, we went through the existing punch list we had, make sure those items were completed, and then we looked for other items. We identified a couple very minor adjust gate valves, that had one trace wire box to put in, by the old tank, and then eventually they often remove silt fence and straw waddles, but that's not until stabilization is complete. So once you get some grass growth in there, they'll come back and remove that stuff. Other than that, those items are all completed on their list. I told Dave and the boys that if they have anything, let us know, we'll put it on the list, and we'll have a punch list for them. Send them something formal in the next couple of days. So if you guys see anything driving around town, any of the hydrants we replaced, bluegrass, anything like that, up by the tank site, let us know. We'll have one for DM tanks as well. It sounded like there were some skated issues on that tower, with that water main break that's doing as well. I think they have some items up on site too. And then up on site, they finished the fence this week, so that was just being wrapped up today when I was up there. It looks good, everything went well there, so that should be there last night. So we'll probably be having a walkthrough and completion for them as well. Any questions on the water project right now? Nothing there? So as Dan mentioned before the meeting, CC Steel is finishing up in McCody right now. They'll be driving, they might show up tomorrow night, they've mobilized in, and then they're going to start Wednesday. That's the plan. I haven't been in touch with Dave, still be contacting Dave for questions and us as well. But there's a couple items we're going to have to take care of. I know by that car wash, we're going to make sure that gets, like it's jetted and cleaned and taped as well.
Can we get a sample of what, somehow, I don't know how we can grab that, but where we feel they're getting some luggage from the sand? I'd like to see if it's, if it's a real fine sand, or if it's something that's maybe been there for quite some time?
Yep. Yeah, you can check that out. Let Jared know. Any questions on that? So they'll come to town, I don't, I don't know how long it's going to take them. I don't imagine it'll be too long, but again, that's the one we got the grant package for. We'll review those tapes and have a report for you guys later this summer. Okay, and then Expedition Estates, we've been bugging Williams Builders for a schedule here, but it does look like Sletton has mobilized in over there. I don't know if you guys have a schedule from them?
No. They're always in the days that they were probably going to be more likely later this month before they do it, and Sletton was hoping within the next two weeks to start lifting the asphalt out, and that'll just put up on our site, so they can do crushing when they're there.
Okay. I did go by today and I took a haul road video, just hearing that Sletton's getting ready to start moving stuff in and getting the asphalt out. Wanted to make sure we had a video of that road going to the highway there, because they'll be hauling on that, so that way if there's any discussion about whether it's heat up before or after, we have video and documents of that. So, kind of how DOT does it, the haul road inspection before and then after. So we'll get a schedule from them, and then we'll have that taken care of, so we'll still be around town here this summer. And then lastly, is the water main break you guys had on the hill. I don't know too much about it, I was talking to the guys, Public Works today about that, and it sounds like that was a little bit of a mess, but talking to Jared, it was, so it's put in 1993, it's not the same thickness of pipe we use today. So today we use DR-18, which is pretty thick. We're estimating that was probably a DR-26, something like that, so as the number gets higher, it will also get thinner. And that's what they used back then. So it looks like the same pipe we use today, but it's actually a little thinner. So Jared's thoughts are that it's probably a backfill issue. When they backfill, maybe there was a rock in there, and all it would take is a rock pressing against that, ground moving a little bit, shoving a hole through it, and it follows that crack and explodes like it did. So, the thicker pipe, you don't see that as much, because you have to put the walls on it. But that's the issue there, and then the low water alarm did not go off in the tower, so that is something we are contacting our controllers about now, so they get taken care of. So that'll be on their punch list to get taken care of immediately. Any other questions on, anything we have going on?
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, moving on to number six, request of citizens for local permit. Hazen Public Library has put in a request. They're going to have some bingo, kids bingo, and get some prizes, so.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve, and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving down to section eight, we've got the commercial building permit by Breland Enterprises. Breland? So, maybe talk us through this a little bit. I looked, I looked at it, just trying to understand just exactly what they're, what they're doing here.
Basically, it's a project to put drain tile and then do some water barrier, water, or stuff inside what is currently the Home Instead Building. Just trying to waterproof things. They were initially talking about adding on, but I don't believe that is going to be happening now, so they just want to do this waterproofing stuff.
Uh, did my picture, it must be down in the basement?
Yeah. Yeah, this is all in lower level.
So they'll be putting in a sump pump or something then?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. To go along with the drain tile, there will be a sump pump, and then some type of covering, membrane type stuff on the floor itself, so that if water does get in there, it'll all be directed to the sump, so that it goes out. I did send these to our building inspector to review. I have not heard back from them as far as any concerns with it.
The water would just pump into the alleyway, or does it tie into the city sewer?
It will.
I just know the condition of that alleyway back there, if you start pumping some more water out in that, I don't know if it's just going to be a vicious cycle, or if it's going to go more.
I don't see that on here exactly where that sump is pumping to. I know that it can pump, so long as there's some type of separator type pit in there or something, so that they're only pumping the water, not helping the solids out, so that it can go into the sanitary drain.
Okay. And this requires the approval of the board, or is it informational only?
This would require approval of the board.
Wishes to the board?
So I was just wondering, I guess, when, when would all this work start? I would kind of, I guess, like to know too, I guess, that where, when all this water's going to go through.
I guess, I don't have anything specific on there. If you want, we can just put it on the next agenda, and I can try and find out some more information.
Can we do that? I, I just want to, I want to have warm and fuzzies that we're not going to be pumping water out of that building there, only to adversely impact either the alleyway or the adjacent properties.
Yeah, because there's nothing specific in here as to when they hope to start either, so we can find out.
Okay, with that then, I'll just have a table up till the next meeting. All right, moving down into reports, sewer and garbage. Most all my stuff was, was addressed tonight. We did talk a little bit about the televising of the line again, and then also hydro cleaning the line over there by the car wash. Paul Dahl, in the course of redoing the car wash over there, has been having ongoing conversations with his, his folks that are involved in the design and everything like that, albeit it wasn't part of the scope with the change out of the guts of the car wash. They, they have been looking at it very closely. They're, they're grasping at straws now, trying to figure out just how they might be responsible, because they're just not seeing anything standing out. And that's why I had asked the question, looking at what type of sand, because the lighter the sand in terms of the size, the easier it is to suspend in, in the liquid. And if, on the low pitch of that street, it may have more of an opportunity to settle out there than, than it would even in the, the design settled, settling boxes there in the ground. So, I commend him for taking it serious and trying to be part of the solution here. So, we're still trying to understand, if we can, what the real cause is, and whether it is the car wash, or, or maybe it has been the car wash from years past, and now it's just, over the years, expressing itself further down the street there. So, that's all I have. Streets Cemetery.
Uh, just a couple things I brought to my attention, it's, it's a good question, it'd be an engineering question as well. As we are starting to sweep and tar, um, engineering purposes for those cracks, do we have to blow them out?
Yeah, so I know John sent something to Dave this morning, and it's in our spec that talks about the whole process of it, and it does say right away that one of the most important steps is to blow them out. So, it gets that tar to stick in there a little better, and I can have John forward that to Monty as well, just so you guys have it, but it is one of the first steps and one of the most important ones, because otherwise, if you have that sand layer in there, it doesn't stick as well. So to blow it out, you get that concrete, or asphalt on tar there, to get that to stay in the cracks.
Have you heard of any issues, like Buellah doesn't do it, the state doesn't do it, Stanton doesn't do it? Have you heard?
They don't blow them out.
No.
I, I get all over the place. Hazen's the only one I know that blows cracks out. I was just wondering if there's any issues with those communities that you guys have heard?
I guess I don't know. I'll, I'll follow up with John, we leave a little bit more of that to John, but we can ask some of those towns to, their engineers, see if they have issues.
You're thinking about saving some costs?
Yeah.
Save the cost, that kind of stuff, so.
Okay. I'll follow up on that one.
Yeah, it'd be awesome. And then the second way, we received a reservation letter from Mike Frillik, going to effect um, two weeks from today's date. Kind of just caught with him on this about an hour ago, we don't know anything about it for now, but I don't know when we can start advertising for a position Monty, if we can do it now, since we've got reservation order, or not?
Yeah. So it would be a combination, or forestry and?
That's forestry and?
We're losing, we're losing both.
I don't know if we have to separate those, or?
Justin and I were talking earlier too, do we just put it in house first, to see if there's any interest in doing those positions, or do you want to open it up right away?
It's what we have in the past, I guess.
Yeah.
For next?
I'm, I'm in favor of offering it up internal, and then if we don't get anything there, then be prepared to put it to the streets, even if it's just, you know, till the next meeting, but they have, oh, clearly the experts' interest, and then if there is none, then we can go ahead and start publishing.
Should we offer it up separately, or together? Have a choice, or?
I would say either or. Because you might have somebody at the city that might want the forestry, but not, you know, the other part of it.
Either or, both of them?
Yeah.
Would we do that, Monty?
Okay. And then if we go to the street, we can decide from there how we want to post it.
So then even if it's just going to be, be the, like, just the forestry, so then... So that makes it the winter time, then what would they do?
If it's just going to be forestry, it would more than likely be what it used to be, just more or less a three-quarter position, where in winter time, basically Jan, December, January, they're doing reports and doing their grant requests, but, yeah. Do we want to consider as part of the job duties of the forestry position, the spraying function, or? I, I don't know what constitutes timewise, that, that portion of the, the job? Or, or is that apples and oranges?
Well, currently, we, we only have one or two certified sprayers. One, yeah.
Sure.
Well, those, yeah, it ends the certification.
But he's choosing not to recertify. He laps.
Oh, he is?
Yeah. That's why I asked the question. Yeah. You got a point there, the forester wouldn't have, wouldn't have time to do it, but... I, I, if, if we're comfortable with it, you know, maybe, maybe that becomes part of the job duties, if we go to the street with the, with the posted position?
Okay.
And then just offer it up as is, and then we'll, we'll have to evaluate how we're going to accommodate the, the weed spraying function. Anything else, Jason?
No, I have a question.
Okay. Finance, bussing, and library.
Police.
Police, fire, and forestry. Uh, so again, forestry thing, we just talked about that. Uh, we did have some issues with that expedition, uh, with the CC. They did get it done to ID Ford, and replaced the shock, four CV shafts, and fixed an oil leak on the engine. Uh, so it's all fixed, but we just wanted to bring it up, like, five thousand something dollars we need to stick into it.
So it was major, but not major?
Like, sounded like the shafts were just starting to leak grease and stuff, so probably could have put it off, but they weren't going to need them eventually. You know, you never know, it could break at the worst time, too. So, while we had it there, it's one of those deals, just get everything fixed, and we know it's worthy, and, um, are we going to send part of this to? Yeah, I'll send a letter to the Sheriff's Department, a copy of that, so. I know when I did talk to Terry the last time, he did say he'd make it right with us, so we'll see where that goes. But this is in the bills, so we approved the vote, because five thousand dollars is actually in the bills.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
All right. Buster?
Oh, I'm sorry. So, I just have a question about that dollar amount, I guess, why, why not, I guess, why not bring that up on the board, I guess, prior to doing all the work?
Um, because it was non-driveable. So it's sitting down in Bismarck. Took them, it was a little over a week to get it in, just to see what was all wrong with it. So they went to drive it down to Bismarck to get the graphs to put on, and he said the rear end was all over, like it was on ice, so that was, was that last weekend? No, it was, it was a few weeks ago. We did, we did talk, we just said, go ahead and fix it, otherwise it would still be sitting down there. So we'd be riding that other vehicle 24/7 still.
I just thought that you need to have, I guess, you need to have, I guess, uh... A board approval, you know? It's prior to, I guess, prior to, I guess... I'm spending that amount, but...
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, and, uh, when we talked about it, Jared was in there with us too, and he said, we've got to get it done. Such as, one of those situations where you better ask for, asking for forgiveness is better than admission, or?
I don't agree with that.
Is there, is there a different way in which we could approach that, Monty, if, if we run into a similar situation? Can I always call a special meeting, like we do with that? I mean, do you want to have a special meeting every?
Yeah. I, I know I've had a couple of situations where we've had, you know, some, some type of emergency repair that we needed to do on a pipe break or something like that, and we just direct it on. But I hear what you're saying, I mean, that, to the best of our ability, we want to make sure that we, as a board, are following policy and approving things that are more expensive and stuff.
And I guess we could have just had him fix the major stuff, and then brought it back here, and maybe he's a molder, so he'll put the shafts in after we approve them. I would have thought, yeah, we could have went that route. Maybe that would have been a better route to do it.
hindsight's almost 2020, but it's good to have the conversation, just so we think about it as, as we move forward. Okay. Anything else? All right, Buster, HCD, you got anything for us?
Well, you know, the only thing I got for you is, when he talked about Expedition Estates here granted, uh, I hope we are not forgetting about the light package that we've talked about a number of times that needs to go in up there, you know? And I'm not sure whose responsibility that is, but, you know, we're being assessed to pay for it on our every, on our monthly billing, you know? And you guys heard me enough, enough times about the lack of lights up there. Yeah, being that the project is going to get done now, there's probably, there should be some planning that's done with lights all the way around that loop. And I'm not sure whose responsibility that is, but I'm assuming it's probably the engineer. I don't know. I mean, in terms of the designer, whatever.
Yeah, I have had some discussions with Tanner at Brook Rider Electric as well, since they supplied color up there about getting some numbers together, so I'll check with him again, too.
Yeah. Just hopefully it doesn't get forgotten about, because it's going to be probably a lot easier to do it once, they get that street stuff squared away, then, after the fact. And that's basically, that's enough for today.
All right. Thank you, Buster.
Yeah.
All right, we will move on to section 10 then. Letter A, we have a sales tax administration agreement that we need to examine here.
I'm going to sneak out of here. Thanks, guys. Thank you. This is every other year, we have to update our agreement with the state tax office, tax commissioner's office, as far as them collecting the city's sales tax and forwarding it on to us. As stated in the notes, this is the same structure that they've had from the last three renewals of this agreement, where it's $35 per permit year, a few percent of the tax, which is kind of a bunch, but... I know that we have the capabilities of collecting it ourselves, and...
Did you say that was the same amount as previous?
There's something to be said for just getting the check each month. All right, wishes of the board?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve. Second, and a second. Any further discussion?
Suppose there's no negotiating with them. I did think, except by the one just going to choose.
All right. Roll call. Hack?
Hi.
Stern?
Hi.
Weaver?
Hi.
Keller?
Hi.
Okay, a motion carries. All right, Behavioral Summer Summit sponsorship, this has been going on for, for a couple of years now. I know when it first came out, the city went ahead and, and provided sponsorship, and you had noted, Monty, we did, which one?
The print. The print. The level sponsorship of $600. The lowest, the lowest sponsorship level.
And that is the same amount if I'm correct?
Right.
Yeah. Make a motion that we, again, we need for the... Make a motion that we, again, we need friendly sponsor of six hundred dollars?
Okay, we've got a motion. Second. And a second. Any questions, comments? Okay, roll call. Hack.
Hi.
Weider.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then the last thing on here is the Main Street flower donation request. For beautification of the city, everybody, I think, knows that Main Street always looks very, very nice during the summer. We've got a lot of blooming plants on all the posts, all the way up and down Main Street, and that takes some effort. The person that had been doing the work in the past has given up that responsibility, and so there will be another person, hopefully, that will take on that responsibility. But they'll look for some money to cover the cost of the work as well as the plants. So in the past, we provided some sponsorship to, I'm not sure the dollar amount, and I'm not sure they're asking for a specific dollar amount, are they, Monty?
Um, we did, it was not just for two thousand dollars.
Two thousand dollars?
And that is what we have done since, uh, twenty-twenty. And as they say, it's not just for the flowers, it's for all the maintenance of the pocket park and the expenses that are going.
Wishes of the board? Make a motion to provide a two thousand dollar donation to them? Okay. Got a motion on the floor?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Weider.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Hi.
Keller.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, that takes us down then to our public comments. Buster already said everything he wanted to say. Dan, you got anything to go? All right. That, that takes us through then, public comments, for lack of public. And that takes us down to approval of the bills. We've got some added bills that Monty gave as handouts today.
Motion approved.
Okay, motion on the floor, approved. And a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Weider.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Motion carries.